We begin each meeting with an open public speaking. We allocate 15 minutes for this purpose. It doesn't necessarily have to do with anything that's on our agenda. Does anybody wish to speak, please come up to the microphone. Speak your mind.
Hi all, how are you?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Owen Harvey and I live at 26 Abiel Street, Kingston, New York. I am here tonight to express my concerns regarding the Agenda Item Number 13. Referral from the Common Council regarding proposed zoning change to allow parking as a primary use. This Board needs to disapprove this zoning change. In reviewing the city zoning codes, I know that under 405-1, purposes enumerated in accordance with subdivisions 24 and 25, Code 20 of Article 3 of the Consolidated Laws of New York State, zoning codes are implemented in the interest of the protection and promotion of the public health, safety, and welfare, and shall be deemed to include the following, among other items. Item 4, the maximum protection of residential areas and provision of privacy for families. Item 7, the protection enhancement, perpetuation, and use of improvements in landscape features of special character or of historic aesthetic or other cultural interests or value, and of districts which include such improvements or features. How does this proposal, which would turn currently green space in the city of Kingston into parking lots for private developers and large-scale residences, meet the mandates of protecting our residential areas and privacy of our families? How do parking lots enhance or improve the special character of our residential districts? 405-30(c) of the zoning code reiterates this language regarding safety and welfare of residents in neighborhoods specifically in the context of the Planning Board and its responsibilities. This proposal is a contradiction to the city's mandate of upholding the protection and quality of life of its residents. As has already been submitted to this body, I would like to further emphasize that this proposal will jeopardize the green spaces in our residential neighborhoods, as well as have negative repercussions in regards to light pollution, noise pollution, and traffic, none of which has been studied ahead of this proposed change. I and others have brought these concerns to the Landmarks Committee and the Ulster County Planning Board. I am happy to report that the Ulster County Planning Board has already voted to disapprove this amendment citing a multitude of concerns, including increased traffic in residential neighborhoods; there has been no analysis of impacts; potential for vehicle storage in residential neighborhoods; the types of vehicles was never specified. How does this change uphold the higher priorities and strategies of the comprehensive plan? Residential districts should have an emphasis on dwellings, not parking lots. In closing, I again request that this Board disapprove of this proposed change for the multitude of considerations outlined. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to bring forward these concerns. And I have to cough and sort of like that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, sorry. Hi, my name is Judith Emily. I lived at 26 Abiel Street and I'm representing our group Grow the RT Responsibly. I hope you've all had a chance to read our letter to the Common Council. We're opposed to this parking amendment for many reasons. It's not in the best interests of our residential neighborhoods. The Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission would be a check and balance on its use in our historic districts, but for Kingston's residential neighborhoods, which aren't in historic districts, there just isn't that check and balance, and that could cause issues of environmental justice in our city. The Chief Deputy of Building Safety told laws and rules that the creation permitting use and maintenance of these parking lots would have to be policed by neighbors, which is an unfair burden placed on residents. Zoning codes that are in place to protect residents and homeowners should not be changed to accommodate favored developers. Private parking lots will not solve our city's parking troubles. The people of Kingston and of our group simply do not want our city to become a bunch of scattered private parking lots. We want to see green space and residential areas preserved, and the city's infrastructure enhanced to increase walkability, not to encourage more cars and parking. On behalf of the Grow the RT Responsibly group, I ask this Board to disapprove this zoning change, as the Ulster County Planning Board wisely did on February 1st. Our city's economic renewal is happening because of our beauty, our history, and our sense of community. The film companies, the tax-paying homeowners who are buying homes at a premium and increasing property values all over the city, the small businesses opening shops all around town, this is our renewal. And private parking lots for a few favored developers and landlords will not help our city grow. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your participation. All right. Item number 13, under zoning code amendment, a referral from the Common Council regarding proposed zoning change to allow parking as a primary use.
I was wondering when I heard this. No, Tom is, but I was wondering.
Okay, this has been a topic of discussion across many Boards and conditions over the years. There's no doubt that the city's in need of additional parking. And staff has outlined some recommendations that they would like the Board to consider if we do decide to move to concara with amending the zoning regarding parking as a primary use for property.
I think we should, because there's public who are interested.
I'm going to read this entire passage here. The current zoning code allows parking as a primary use in commercial zones as C1, C2, and C3. In all other zones, the triple R, double R, R1, 2, 4, 5, and 6, neighborhood business, RT zone, N1 and 2, O1, 2, and 3, the RLC, RF-R, and RF-DH, parking is limited to being allowed as an accessory use only. Staff feels that parking should be permitted use in all zones by special permit issued by the planning board with conditions for site issues, also with some of the following stipulations. Now, as you know, the special permit would be something that would be a periodic review by this Board, not like a site plan. So, staff would recommend that the following requirements be included as part of the special permit. First one is the parking lot will need to be tied to another permitted use within 400 feet. If the parking lot is more than 400 feet from the permitted use, the planning board will need to consider whether this is a reasonable distance for parking combinations. Next one is if the parking lot is required by the planning board to meet the off-street parking requirement specified in the zoning code, a formal agreement will need to be submitted and found acceptable by Corporation Council to ensure that the lot will not be sold or converted for another use. Next one is a site plan will be required with parking spaces, landscaping, and lighting noted on the plans. And this plan will need to comply with zoning code section 405-34 for off-street parking and loading. And the last recommendation from staff is store board will need to be addressed in a manner that is acceptable to the planning board, the engineering department, and Building Safety Division. In the zoning code, this apartment is allowed to use in the following districts, C1, 2, and 3. The wording in the code states public and private off-street parking lots and parking garages. Unless accessory to on the same lot with the use otherwise permitted, such garages and parking lots shall be limited to use by passenger automobiles exclusively. As I said, you know, the recommendation is for to permit it with special permit. They would have to go back for a periodic review just to make sure that all of the conditions of the original approval. And if they're not up to the stuff with how we feel things should be, the Board certainly can revoke that special permit or renew it. So, anybody have any feelings on that?
I'm, I know we need parking, and as a Board member, we've had this conversation over and over. I'm just, I'm just concerned.
Is there people that are interested? Yes, thank you.
I'm just concerned about this being a blanket across the Board for every zone. I mean, this is a city. There are certain zones that are mixed use, they're commercial, they're residential, they are zones that have a high density use, and I think those have been the problematic areas. But I think there's also areas of the city that are much more residential in nature, and I'm not certain that every zone should be a part of this. There also are zones in the city that are residential in nature, but they border commercial zones. And over the years, we've had issues with those commercial zones trying to expand into residential neighborhoods, especially along the Albany Avenue corridor. And I'm not certain that a residential structure in a residential zone should be torn down for commercial space in a commercial zone because it borders. And I'm just concerned about this being blanket across the Board. That being said, we have areas of Uptown, Midtown, and Downtown that are more older industrial area that have many different uses involved, and it's much more congested, and those are the areas that unfortunately need parking. And I just think that there's a certain amount of people in the city that bought where they bought because they liked the characteristics of the neighborhood. And if you're in a neighborhood that's high density, high use, you have to expect a high density, high use usage of that area. And if you're in another area that's residential, or even certain parts of the city that are rural, you bought with that understanding that that section, you're trying to maintain that characteristic of the neighborhood. And to make this blanket in every zone, I'm not in favor of. And I know that the city's working on a master plan, they're working on changing all these zones, and I just would like to know what those zones are and how this is going to fit in with that.
Okay.
That's, that's my concern.
Well, if it's issued by special permit, I mean, we would have a way to prevent that, you know, sprawl into rural areas. I mean, when we say parking is allowed, it's not necessarily going to be a parking lot. Maybe it's going to be something that only accommodates two cars or four cars, or, you know, like if you have a, you know, we've had some people in rural areas come and add an apartment onto the top of their house, and maybe they can park two cars alongside their house in an empty lot, you know? So, we don't want to exclude people being able to expand their own home if they choose. I mean, I don't understand your point. And we wouldn't have a huge parking lot in the middle of a triple R zone, something like that. But we could prevent that by having them have to come to the planning board for their special permits.
Anybody else?
Thoughts?
The referral from the Common Council, is it, do they already have it in their mind? Was it, was it a, the referral based on, the wording that they had that came down at us, was it for every?
Right, the referral, Tom?
For every zone? No?
Every.
No, it did not specify zones.
We need, we need specify manufacturing, commercial, or just residential zone.
Primary use, just a couple of cars.
And there is no specific legislation at this point.
No.
Those rules is waiting for comments back from Plan, Plan, and HLPC to start figuring out what direction they want to go in, and then legislation will be wrapped.
So, for all residential districts, okay, like Tom said.
Just thinking about Robert's comment about, so you're saying that someone in a commercial zone, potentially within 400 feet, be 400 feet of residential. So, maybe there's a way to talk.
We've had that several times, that's what I mean. I agree with the staff comments below and the special permit and the process, and I agree with where you're going with this, but I'm not willing to send the recommendation me personally back to the Common Council that says all zones. I think, I think they need to look at the individual zones and figure that out, along with what they're already working on as part of the master plan, what the end zones are going to be. If they haven't had that discussion yet, I think this is premature.
Okay, but just to add to this.
I mean, there's an empty lot right next to a commercial business right now along the Albany Avenue corridor that was not built on specifically because it was an RRR zone that's sitting empty, that has cars periodically parked on the grass with mud all over the street for certain businesses that have a lot of employees. And this is a prime example that in this case, those neighbors raised hell in these meetings, and if this goes through all zones, those two commercial businesses could snatch that up, put parking in. Granted, they would come to us for a special use permit if that's what you decide, but again, you're now infiltrating back into a different zone that wasn't intended for commercial purpose.
Well, that's what I'm just saying here, just to put it out there. I mean, you could, you could word it in a way that, that it'd be tied to another permitted use within 400 feet in the same zone. I mean, there would be a way, just to, not, you know.
I think when you start mixing the zones, now you're, you know, you just have issues. I mean, I always have the assumption that that's the reason for a line. I mean, there's got to be a line someplace.
Right.
The problem is we have too many of them. We just have too many zones.
Well, yeah.
They're going to do what they want, even though everybody come back and say one thing, or they're going to do what they want anyway?
Any other thoughts?
So, they're just looking for residential, so it's only.
I like the direction Kyle's wording was going.
Within the same.
Fits into what Robert was saying.
Right, within the same zone.
Yeah, so then if.
Rather than being just a blanket, okay.
Because he has a valid point.
So, what does that mean? If I live in the RT zone, we're going to be handled differently than Pearl Street? How, it's not going to be the same city? Why? How does that all work?
No, I think what Robert and Kyla were getting at is that if, say you're in the RT zone, okay, if there's another property within the RT zone that is available within a certain distance, that it could potentially be used for off-street parking, provided it goes through the whole special permit review process, based on our criteria, which would require landscaping and lighting and storm drainage and access. And the permit process, obviously, as you're well aware, is, has term limits, so it would have to be abided by. And it would have to have a formal agreement that is approved through Corporation Council's office that ties it to a specific use. So, you couldn't, in other words, you cannot buy a property and just say, I just want to create a parking lot for just whomever I feel like using it for. It has to be tied to a specific use.
But then a parking lot in, let's go, might as well use the RT zone, I feel comfortable there. A parking lot could end up being built for 18 cars between two homes, is what we're saying.
That's what's being proposed.
That's potential, yeah, I mean, potentially, I can't say that that would not happen. But that is the role of the planning board, and that's their discretion in terms of the whole review process and the special permit review process. You could say that would be too many spaces for that neighborhood and for that particular parcel of land.
My concern is if you blanket all zones, you could have one zone intruding on a different zone, a commercial onto a residential, because the commercial has the ability to buy into the residential and grab it for parking, so now that residential ends up, in essence, becoming a parking lot for really a commercial purpose. But it's a slippery, I mean, it's a slippery slope, though, because if you give.
As long as it's within the same zone, I think.
So, as I said before, and we all know that language discussing this is already being talked about in the master plan meetings that we're having. So, I think something will come out of that, in fact, at one point. But I do agree with you about allowing, not allowing, this just deals with residential, this request. And I'm not in favor of having the primary use of a lot in any residential area for parking. And is that what we're, is that what the direction that we're?
Strictly the residential, yes.
Just the residential, which is what this document has been referred to us from the Common Council, right? That's, that's what. Does anybody have their way to feel about that?
Are you saying triple R, R1, R2, R3?
Yeah.
Is that the ones that you're talking about?
Well, there's also R4, 5, and 6.
Are those the ones?
Yeah, and it says, in this, it says triple R, R1, R2, R3, et cetera, on this.
But does that include RT or exclude RT?
No, it would only include this, it would only include the residential, purely residential lots. RT is not purely residential, it's the Rondell District.
So, I mean, how is it, how will that affect the RT district, what we're discussing here? There's no protection for the neighbors as there are in the other Rs, or there is protection?
Well, it would have to be a review by the planning board by a special permit.
Right.
So, individually, there would be a required public hearing, as we would typically do. And it would be noticed, so the neighbors would have the opportunity to come and speak to it. The planning board would do a very, it's not just like, okay, you can just go in and put gravel down and start parking on a lot. You have to go through a specific review process, you have to have a agreement that's approved by Corporation Council, you have to show us that you have adequate drainage, screening, landscaping.
But right now, the RT, that's, it's not, it's not allowed. So, I think there were.
What is the, RT?
Rondell.
RT is the Rondell District.
And that's running really from Abiel all the way up to?
McEntee.
McEntee? And that's running from, what would you say, Broadway over to Hudson?
Hudson.
So, if we can just act on this tonight?
Yeah, we're trying.
And allow the, the language to be crafted in the master plan discussions that are currently taking place, that, that may govern this stuff, it may not.
I think we agree with you, Wayne, but I think what we're trying to figure out is amongst the Board members, what zones we're going to send back yes, or what zones we're going to send back no. And from what I'm hearing, the Board is not comfortable with RR, RR, or triple R, double R, R1, 2, 4. I think we have to probably figure out what we want to do with 5 and 6 and RT.
Yeah, I'm not sure of 4, 5, 4, 5, and 6, I'm not sure.
4, 5, and 6, I'm not as concerned, because majority of those are pocket properties in commercial districts from what I've seen before the Board. The RT, though, that is a large residential neighborhood primarily.
Right, but it's also one of the districts that we have the most issue with, because it's an older historic neighborhood where parking is effectively unavailable on many of the lots. So, for any adaptive reuse of the property, we run into this problem.
We do. That's the tough zone.
Right, same with Uptown, with the Stack A area.
Well, one case in particular in the RT zone, is the Armadillo Restaurant in the RT zone?
Yes, it is.
Because Merle had a, she wanted to use a lot on West Union Street as, as auxiliary parking for one of her.
Correct.
And that was not allowed by the way the code.
This woman has questions?
It's not a public comment.
I have a question in the comment, does it have to be at the end?
I'm sorry.
If you can, is it, is it a short comment? I mean, because if you can submit your, your questions to the, it's not a public, it's not a public commentary right now. I don't mean to just exclude the public from.
This is really just a referral from the Common Council, so they're, they're going to have a public hearing.
This is, this is not the final set.
I know, but I think what you say is very important to them. I think it's, it's.
Oh, and we're taking it as that.
Okay, so, I mean, I think that it might be the, okay. I just wanted to say, you're saying that parking is needed all over Kingston?
Yeah, we're, this is.
If we could say that parking is needed in the Rondell District, maybe public transportation in order to maintain the historic values is more appropriate.
I'm sure the Common Council will have a public hearing on, on this as well. If you can hold off and submit, because this is not a public commentary right now for this Board, and I don't, I don't mean to be.
Okay, I just thought it would be appropriate to give some comments that had to do with city planning specifically.
Okay, well, we, we have that opportunity in the beginning of the meeting, we're here in the beginning of the meeting with the 15 minute.
No, I wasn't.
Okay.
But, you, okay.
Okay, I don't mean to cut you off, okay, but I have to cut you off.
With all the, with all the other proposals that you did in the beginning, so that's why I was confused. Could you just tell the difference between this and the others?
You let people comment in the beginning of the other.
Those are, those are public hearings.
They were, they were scheduled public hearings.
Okay.
Okay. They were, they were scheduled public hearings, okay, by law. And that's what Chairman Platt was saying at the beginning, is that at the beginning of every meeting, there is an opportunity for the public to speak. And we did have a couple of individuals that should get up and speak about this issue.
So, I think what we have to do is just pick some of these Rs and decide what we want as a board and try and eliminate. And then maybe come down to even if, like, one or two that we have concern for. And then throw it back to common council and say, look, these, we definitely feel this way. These others are problematic and need more special attention. I mean, I don't think we have to definitively decide any of here. But just tell them where our concern is as a planning board.
Okay.
Well, I don't think you get any arguing on the triple R, double R, 1 and 2.
Yeah, I, I would say.
I agree with that, so I mean, if we.
But the others, I would, I agree with Mary Jo on those when you have the multi-families.
5 and 6, I don't really have any issue with because it's a pocket mostly in commercial.
4 could be discussion, 5 and 6, you know, is more.
I agree with 5 and 6 being, you know, being able to do the special use permit. And then we're back to RT, and I think that's the one that the common council really has to look at with wherever they're going with this new updated zoning. Again, I don't know if they're keeping that district, if they're consolidating or another.
I think that district is not going to be removed.
But I mean, is it going to become an R district like everybody else, or are they going to keep it?
I think it'll stay. Yeah, the way it was originally crafted was specifically to be tailored to the Rondell area specifically, based on the nature of the properties and, you know, the street layout.
Are there enough pockets in the RT zone to include it in the recommendation that we sent back to the council to allow parking with special permit? I mean, I use Merle's example as that.
I think there are, I mean, I think there are some properties. But I also agree with Robert and Jonathan's point that we're not encouraging that buildings get demolished to turn into parking lots. I would never go in that direction. Because I think keeping the, you know, keeping the infrastructure is critical.
Can we include that in our recommendation back to them? I mean, I don't know how much teeth that has to tell somebody what they can and can't do with a property, but we can certainly include that.
It's next to such a, it's next to such a commercial zone, I think it has to at least be further discussion.
It's either that or, again, they have to look at the discussion in RT zone and what it's actually encompassing versus the actual commercial. And maybe certain portions of the RT zone should really be commercial that are RT. And other areas of RT that are truly residential in nature that the RT was designed for, then they shouldn't be included. I mean, we only, let's be honest, we're talking about four or five streets in this entire zone that are very small sections that really have significant commercial structures. The rest of RT generally, I would say probably 85% of it is residential. So we, we keep talking about the same streets. If we keep talking about Beal Street, no matter which end you're on, because it's very commercial. We keep talking about the few streets that run parallel to Broadway as you go down the hill, because there's a lot of commercial structures that have gone through those streets into the back streets. Very rarely are we talking about structures on Hudson or Ravine or some of the other streets that are very residential in nature, that I don't think they want parking lots next to their house.
I just want to clarify that, we don't talk about them here because we don't review residential. But we do have people that have single-family homes that are currently parking or would like to park on a neighboring or possibly across the street lots. We do have, you know, and that happens in all zones. So it's not to say that people want to create, you know, 18-space parking lots.
That's what people are going to be concerned with.
But people do want to create a driver's license.
That's, that's the planning board's role.
That's what I was trying to say before, I mean, you might have a small home that wants to put just one or two spots next to their home. You don't want to be able to stop them from being able to do that to accommodate an extra car or an apartment they might want to make them rent.
But are you talking about on the lot, on the parcel that the house is sitting on? Or are you talking about?
Maybe they have a small thing across the street or next to, you know, a small field next to their home.
Then can you limit it to certain sizes? I mean, so many spots can go get a special use permit, anything above and beyond can't? To prevent this large parking lot situation that people are concerned with?
You know, the special permit, I mean, since I've been on the board, this special permit process is so detailed. I mean, I mean, you're not going to be able to slip something in here. I mean, you have to go through a lot of hoops to get this, I mean, if you go through the special process.
And we have actually taken steps to revoke the special permit, whether it's for a tavern or, you know, if they're not living up to the.
That's the hard part.
Yeah.
That's what the board struggles.
Yeah.
It's not the initial, it's, it's the enforcement and the long-term effect and monitoring it. And I think that's what people are concerned about, that if they end up with this and it's not working. It's the enforcement, sometimes we have administrations that are very aggressive in building safety. Sometimes we have administrations that aren't. And I think that's what the general public is concerned about, it just, it always shifts as time goes on. And that's why, that's why we have zoning rules. To take that out, to take the politics, to take the, you know, the change of administration, to pull it out.
All right, so the recommendation that we sent back to council, are we all in agreement to exclude these residential? Where the triple R, double R, R1, 2, where were we on 4?
4.
Yeah, that would need further discussion.
But 5 and 6 is something.
I think the others.
I mean, if we're going to send some concrete back to them right now.
4 to me is 4 and 1, so I think you have to leave it in, I think.
And the RT, are we saying?
I would leave that in.
I want to leave that in. You have to, I think that whole area has to be discussed thoroughly.
I think there should be a note to the common council, the RT zone and the actual zone itself has to be looked at. I, I, I'm not certain that, that RT zone is, should be the size and where it is right now. I think that's a, that's a master plan situation.
And that is, that is part of master plan's, the master plan discussion. But for our purposes right now, as, as the zoning code shows, shows the RT now, are we going to include that in, in the group that we're not going to recommend that that triple R?
You've got staff comments.
I'm going to leave 4 and 1. I would leave the RT out of that.
Do you want to take the RT out or?
No, no, I, I don't want to include with the triple R, the double R.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I was, okay, all right.
Yes, I don't want.
So what's staying RT and what?
R, triple, triple R, double R, 1, 2.
Are coming out.
Our residential zones that we don't feel should have parking lots.
Right.
Okay.
There's certain portions of the RT that have to be discussed, I'm not saying it'll happen. But it has to remain on the table until that is settled, what that area is going to ultimately be.
That's the hard part, we don't know what they're going to be.
We don't know that, at this board, we don't know that. But I feel that has to be left into the discussion until they decide what it's going to be.
Okay, so in, again, the recommendation that we're going to send back, I'm looking down to the paragraph that says staff feels that parking should be permitted use in all zones excluding triple R, double R, R1, R2. That's the language we're, is everybody?
Right.
Jamie?
Yeah, and I also think that, are we still putting in that they have to be within the same zone?
Right, I was just going to say that, yeah.
Yeah, I definitely agree with that.
Jonathan, you good with that?
I guess. Well, you, this is an important discussion for you because you live in the RT zone. You, I mean, you have neighbors that have lots scattered here and there that do park on them.
Yes.
Do you think that that's something that's acceptable in that zone to the neighborhood? That people would be okay with that?
You know, if it's one car, but you know, also keep in mind, at, at German Street, you have a whole bus thing. And when those buses are warming up in the morning and whatever, and getting to where they want to go, that is unpleasant, even for me, when, you know, they're just coming, 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 or, or whatever. So, yes, and, you know, I don't think, the one thing that I think is, it's never been decided here, is Abil Street a commercial street or a residential street? I think you could go both ways on that. We, if you certainly go from Ravine Street on Abil, aside from Merle, until you get to Hudson, aside from Maria, it's mostly residential. And then even as we go through, so is, is that a commercial street or a residential street? I think it's, it's residential. I have friends that live in those apartments, so I, I don't know how I feel.
But this, this shouldn't really, I mean, like, we have, I want to bring up specific properties, but there's a multifamily residential in that zone that could potentially create some parking across the street for the residents that live within that multifamily residential. So it's not to say that this would create, I just want to drive the point home that this isn't creating commercial parking lots.
Right.
I don't think anyone wants to see a commercial parking lot where you're renting spaces or.
Supporting uses with off-street parking, which is.
I mean, there's some bed and breakfasts in that particular area that could benefit from a couple spots off-street.
Absolutely, especially in the snowstorm.
Yeah, you know, so that, that's, that's what I have in my head.
That makes, that makes good sense what you're saying, but it's not.
I just want to, also with the, with the strictly residential neighborhoods, I think that it just needs to be clear that tying it to a primary use doesn't mean that someone's going to be able to open a restaurant within that commercial zone and then create parking. We're talking about parking for a single-family home or, you know.
And that's why that condition is in there.
I mean, it's perfectly fine to say no to all of this or, you know, however. I just want to just make it clear that this isn't, you know, there are ways to maybe say different things. We're not creating, you know, I don't think anyone's asked.
I'm just leaning towards agreeing with Mary Jo on this one. I think certain zones know, but I think this RT zone is worth the discussion and worth a special use permit because they do have issues with parking. And the lots are smaller and it's a higher density.
Right.
Okay, so we're all good with the four bullets that staff has showed down here? We ready, are we still voting? Yeah, good?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion that we, parking should be permitted use in all zones, exclude for the exceptions of triple R, double R, R1, and R2. This is by special permit, issued by the planning board with the conditions that I had outlined earlier. The stipulations. That is a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Robert Jacobson, the motion is second on this? It's, it's the, those fours residential zones that we're going to exclude, okay?
Mary Jo, they did not include R4.
No.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, carry. That was a good discussion, I, I know it's an important issue, and we'll see how this goes, thank you folks. All right, is that it for business now? Motion to, I'm making a motion to adjourn, second.
Second.
Second by Jonathan Ford, all in favor? Opposed, carry.
I'd like to make a stipulation, four people who are second.